All right, I've called to order the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, August 27, 2024. I'll let the writers show all holder present with the exception of Anastasia and Crawford. We're both excused. Going right into the agenda, we had PL 8624, Mayor Alio, to authorize the mayor to execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Treasury, Federal Aviation Administration for funding associated with Cat County Oleand Airport rotating beacon reconstruction design portion. Mayor?
Thank you. The first two are doing grant agreements for the airport. I'll let Ben explain them. Matt and I will explain them.
So the airport has the long-term master plan. This is just part of the grant applications and planning for the airport. And there's two grants that are prepared for submission this budget year. So this is just part of the long-term planning.
Can we give more detail on what it's for in specific?
Um, it's mainly what they're listing here. We've got two projects. One is reconstruction of the rotated beacon. The other one is lighting signage, pappy and reels.
What's pappy and reels about?
I don't really think you know.
It's a lot of airport jargon that I haven't quite picked up on.
Okay. Mayor, are they on for this particular project or? I think it's all people.
No, it's the attorney for people.
Okay. I'm sorry, Matt Long and Lauren, I'm going to leave you for now. Appreciate it. How about that means? Does that mean them?
Uh, no.
No, it means us in here? Nope, we hear that.
So a pappy is a current standard visual glide slope indicator consisting of four light boxes arranged perpendicular to the edge of the runway. I don't know what the other one is. Can Google it that fast?
Basically, the lights are getting old.
It's kind of wet, yeah.
That's all you got?
Yeah.
All right, any questions or comments on PL 8624?
Um, well, yes and no. One is I... I guess when there's particular jargon or something that you think we might not know if we can get an explanation of that, just because if we're going to vote on it, we should know what it is.
I completely agree. I'm just going to say, just reading this, I mean, we can make an assumption of rotating beacon, but you know, a little more detail, a little more information on what this is about would be beneficial. And then even when you look at the PL breakdown in our next meeting, there's a lot of jargon here. A lot of charters and chapters and stuff like that. I mean, we need a little bit more information, especially considering that we asked for this stuff a little earlier than the day of the voting. We do understand we're in summer session, but the more information the better. So with that, I'll entertain the sponsor.
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Pannas, can I get a second? Second by Corney, all in favor? Or do we don't need to do that? We're all set. All right, PL 8724, authorize the mayor to execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration for funding associated with Cat Co., Oleand Airport airfield lighting, signage, pappy and reel replacement design bidding portion. This is kind of what we just touched on a little bit, and sign is explanation of what pappy and reel was. I'm sorry, call the woman McCall. Is there any more information on this particular one? Mayor?
I don't have that with me. I can get that, you get the consultants to do that to everybody on this in the future. I agree with you that the acronyms and all that, yeah, we should have knowledge of that. So I do agree with you on that. These are, I guess, over the years, we've been getting so many grants and that from, you know, the federal government and that, that you kind of, I guess, we get a little bit, that we know what they are. And a lot of things that we do, there's acronyms that we need help with. So I can see that you get that information.
Thanks, Mayor. You're an open... So Ben, are these, are these grants only just to pay for just the design portion? No work, just the designing of these items to be done?
So again, I'm new, still learning the whole airport system. So Mayor, correct me, but they kind of presented this, we had a meeting on the master plan. So there's a big master plan for the airport, and you kind of have to go through all these steps. So you have to design it, you have to submit for funding for that, you have to do all these things. And it's a long-term type of plan. So this is, this is this phase of it where we submit to get reimbursed for the payment, for the design of this stuff.
Okay.
And then based on that, once you get your design done, you go out and make your bid, then you go back and say, okay, here's how much it costs to build it, then you go back and ask for funding for that. And so it's kind of an ongoing re-confirmed process with the Federal Aviation Commission.
All right, I just want to make sure I said that it was just for paying taxes, for just the design portion, no work?
Correct.
Thanks, Ben. All right, hold on, McCall.
So if this is part of a long-term plan that's kind of established, is that something that we could get? Like what the long-term plan is, kind of in the design?
Yeah, I thought that was already provided to you. But we'll make sure you can get it again.
Yeah, if we've had it, it's been a while, so my apology, if we already have it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on this one? Entertain a sponsor?
A sponsor.
Sponsored by the woman McCall, second by Benyon. All right, PL 88-24, Mayor Alio, to authorize execution of payment and lual tax agreement between the City of Oleand and People Inc. For a 1.79 acre portion of the property located at 400 to 450 North East Street.
Do you have Carrie Kirk here to talk about it, and representatives and People Inc. here to answer your questions?
Hi, good evening. Just to provide some background and history, I've been working with People Inc. over the past couple of years. Some of our recent work has been in the last one year, one month. It's been an overall project relating with the IDA and the mall. And the reason that there was any relation to that is the IDA was the lead agency on the seeker for a coordinated review. So ultimately, they received a negative declaration on the 22nd of August relating to the mall projects. There was the inducement of the pilot for that piece. So the Planning Board met on both applications, which are indeed separate. This month, the approval from the Planning Board came last night with conditions on both sets of projects. So ultimately, People Inc. will be purchasing 1.79 acres of the property from the developer. So ultimately, I have Brian Smith here from People Inc., we have the architect from People Inc. that long, as well as along with Lauren Gannon, their attorney. So I'll hand it over.
All right.
Oh, it's Brian, I'm sorry. It's Brian Smith of People Inc.
Hi, I'm Brian Smith, the City Development Department of People Inc. We're really excited about this project. Excited about this being at this stage here. We're looking to have our pilot approved, and basically, there's just an agreement between the city and People Inc. That spells out exactly how the taxes are paid over the course of the next 40 years of the property. And it is a little bit different than kind of a typical, typical property tax. It's through what's called 577, which means we're allowed to pay taxes based on the actual financial performance of the property. The benefit of having a pilot, this just clearly spells out how these payments are made over the next 40 years, as opposed to having to kind of regroup annually and show the, you know, exactly how the financials performed that year. We just kind of agreed to it now. That way, we can budget around that. That way, the city can budget around that as well. But with that, I mean, we're thrilled about the project. We're thrilled about being located in downtown Oleand. We think it's super walkable with a lot to do, and we're excited about this potential project for our future tenants. So with that, I'll just open it up to any questions, and otherwise, just hoping to get this completed tonight.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments?
I get McCall. Well, I'm sure it's a question we all have, is how does this compare to what would happen if we did sign up? Does this agree? How does it compare in terms of work?
I would just say, we got the, everything is sort of based on the year one budget that we prepared, which we gave to Carrie and the assessor. So our, our goal would be for year one to be, it would be exact, the exact same. The financial projection and the budget would be the same, and the number would end up being the same. What we're projecting out is a 2% increase every year, which is pretty consistent with what we see with our properties. The truth is that we don't know. It can be, it can be better, it can be worse on a every-year basis. But that's sort of the trade-off, is that we don't have to worry about it, having those types of variations. We just set it at this amount. So that would be it.
So this is the building portion that was the Montan in that area?
It's, so the Montan is being demolished, and then a new building closer to Delaware is being constructed. So it's not, the whole building is not in the footprint of the Montan, but it is in that general area, if that answers the question.
Okay, so this specific legislation we're talking about just refer to that piece?
Correct.
For that whole family complex?
Yes, so ultimately, generally, not the Rockstone Pay County for city taxes. This is actually almost the exact community post that the council had approved for 420 East State Streets, for the city of housing piece. So it's ultimately that the city will be receiving taxes in the tax unit annually, with an increase for the next 40 years. And so right here is the one, I can't take any credit for that. He arrived at the number, so.
All right, any other questions? Question?
In the same kind of footprint and everything that we discussed when we first went out to Rochester and saw the program, kind of with the same kind of concept, nothing has changed there, other than going forward with looking at pilots, right?
I'm not sure I understand the question exactly, I'm sorry.
I can carry it down. So Carrie, when we went up to Rochester, we did the program. So we're looking at the same type of program that we discussed from the onset, with the type of housing, has it changed or anything yet?
It hasn't really, because we had an original set senior housing, this American study is called for workforce. So the bottom of seniors could still live there, but that's what you're saying. Because Angelo's project is separate from People Inc.'s. But the overall concept included a housing developer component, so that is this piece of it, if that's what you're asking?
So, and I had read somewhere that the population should, so the population now is which population is there?
It's heating up. It's just family, family housing.
Same number in units?
It's 60 units. 51 bedroom units and 10 two-bedroom units.
Can you read that again, please?
Yeah, 60 total units, and, yep, 50 units are one-bedroom, and 10 are two-bedroom.
And this won't be geared towards seniors specifically now, or will it be geared more towards heating up?
Correct. Our, our project has always been, from our, from our perspective, it's always been this workforce housing project.
Okay. I think I have to clarify about the goal here. Any other questions or comments on this one? All right, I'll sponsor. Can I get a second? Second by? All right, I think that's what Matt Long and the rest of the group, the group that was on, so we're, okay. Just so I can go ahead and disconnect them. All right, thank you, Matt.
Appreciate it.
Yep, appreciate it. Thank you, Lauren. All right, moving on, PL 89-24, to authorize transfer of $250,000 from line item 8120.301 at 4800, from line item 8120.447 to capital fund number 232 for the levy and sewer recrea, I'm sorry, reconstruction project. Yeah, renovation projects.
Brad will be here to explain this.
So this is just moving money from our budget lines into the capital fund line to pay the bill for the project. So we were able to use the $250,000, yeah, the $250,000 we normally use for sewer lining. We got approval from the state to use that money for the project. So we're moving that money into the capital fund line, and then supplementing that with $4,800 from our contracted services line in sewer to that capital fund as well. And that should, that should be the check for payment for the bill for the project.
Should fully cover it?
Has it right now.
All right, the goal is to court the plan, should be fine. Have they begun construction on that, or?
They are starting Tuesday.
Any other questions or comments on this one? On Tuesday, September 3rd?
Yes.
McCall, okay. McCall will sponsor. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Pannas. All right. PL 90-24, to authorize transfer of $4,881.40 from general fund contingency to line item 5110.412 for costs associated with cleanup. I think we've all received the email on this and where this cost generated from. Is there anything, Mayor, on the head, or?
Just that, yeah, you should have received the memorandum on this and the cost breakdown. And we were able to collect 40.16 tons of debris. And we collected, let's see, 23, 123 households. Each contributed $55 towards this. So the amount was $6,765. So the total bill was $11,646, $46.40. So that left us with a deficit of $4,881.40. So we're asking, because this was, we did not have budgeted money, we're asking that, that be moved from a, from a general fund contingency to cover the fees associated with cleanup week.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Len, since you're here, quick question. Since this will be coming out of the general fund contingency, do we have a ballpark figure of what the balance will be?
Ray, maybe this $77,000 keep there right now.
$77,000, okay. And just for future, I mean, I always ask, but anytime we're pulling from any of the contingencies, I always just like to get on record with the balances. That way, we know, have some ballpark figure of where we're at, depending on the year, where we're at in the year. Any other questions? Yep, Pannas?
The line item we're transferring to is titled Maintenance of Streets. Is that, is that really the account we're using to do cleanup week?
That's the account DPDW always uses for cleanup week, for whatever reason.
Okay.
All right, any other comments, question? All right, moving on, we need the sponsors, is sponsor? Sponsored by Benyon, a second, please? Second by McCall. All right, moving on, PL 91-24, to authorize the mayor to submit an application to the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York, dash nine, through the State of Municipal Facilities Capital Program, SAM, for costs associated with their repairs to the Thangy E. Bartlett House roof.
I'll have Carrie speak on this one.
It's my understanding that there were some quotes that came in that Chris Fury was able to get from a couple of contractors. They came in higher than what the council was able to transfer into the dedicated capital fund for the project. So I had, I was able to express a need for this to assembly manager Leo's office. So in turn, he has extended an opportunity for the city to be able to apply for up to $75,000. And so I'm seeking permission to be able to do so.
Any questions? Jer, Ben?
Based on the bids that came in, Carrie, would the $75 cover that?
What would need to happen, because of the amount the bids came in, in order to do proper procurement, because of those amounts, it's not sufficient to just ask for votes. A bid document needs to be created and released. So it would ultimately depend on how the bids come back in. But based on the votes, it was for one of the contractors, but not the other.
That's why I was wondering, just general.
So, yes, we know.
And that bid, that bid was only for the roof, that had nothing to do with the retaining wall and the steps were, correct?
Correct. It was just a replacement of the roof, being the architectural shingles and in addition to two rubber roofs.
Okay. We move some money for the help with the roof over there. Let's, no, actually?
$44,000.
How many?
$44,000.
$44,000. So we're, you know, we keep our fingers crossed that if we get this grant and the $44,000, that that could put us real close to what we need for the roof.
Oh, just the roof, not the wall? The 44, we put just towards the whole, the whole list of things. I think that they, I think if I remember right, like Chris had thought something like it was a kind of a lower number on the roof repair. So the 44 was for both, or? Okay. And then just one last question. This would be, this for a complete roof repaired or for replacement?
Tear up and replace it.
So replacement, okay. Thank you. Of the shank of the roof and two rubber roof sections, correct?
Correct.
So have you heard her say that?
Yeah, that you can keep the, you're replacing, there's two sections of it.
All right. For this one, there's any other questions, comments? All right, I'll entertain a sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by McCall, second by Benyon. Any other questions or comments? All right, I do have something, Tiffany, for the next Committee of the Whole. Can we add on their rules of procedure, please? This is to discuss Chapter 2 of the Charter for rules and procedures for this seat here. When the council president is here, the process for doing that, we've been waiting it. So just to discuss, and we'll see what comes out of that. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Sorry.
Second by Benyon, all in favor?
All right.
Close. We are adjourned from Committee of the Whole. I'll call to order regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, August 27th. Mr. Clerk, will you please follow the roll?
Alderman, Benyon?
Here.
Alderman, Pannas?
Here.
Alderwoman, Corney?
Here.
Alderwoman, McCall?
Here.
Alderman, Robinson?
Here.
Alderman, Anastasia? And Alderman, President Crawford, Jackson. Five of the presidents you had in court.
Thank you very much. Please rise for an application and further leadings.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name we pray.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains these nations, for God, the good, the holy, and just...
All right, we have the reading correcting appropriate minutes from previous meeting.
The regular meeting of the Oleand Common Council was held on Tuesday, August 13, 2024, at 6:30 PM. President Ronald Crawford, Benyon, Pannas, Corney, McCall, Robinson, and Anastasia, Mel Raxton.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Ben, do you have a second? Second by?
Flan?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Sorry, I can't hear you. Let me see, committee reports?
None.
Any communication to the mayor?
None.
Miscellaneous communication?
None.
City reports?
None.
Look at that. Close legislation and referrals.
PL number 81-24, by Alderman Benyon, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, August 27, 2024, for resolution by council president. PL number 82-24, Alderman Pannas, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, August 27, 2024, for resolution by council president. PL number 86-24, by Mayor Alio, referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, August 27, 2024, by council president. PL number 87-24, by Mayor Alio, referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, August 27, 2024, by council president. PL number 88-24, by Mayor Alio, referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, August 27, 2024, by council president. PL number 89-24, referred, excuse me, by Mayor, by Mayor Alio, referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, August 27, 2024, by council president. PL number 90-24, by Mayor Alio, referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, August 27, 2024, by council president. And PL number 91-24, by Mayor Alio, referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, August 27, 2024, by council president.
Thank you very much to that. Before we go to public comment, I'd like to give us opportunity to read all the persons. They have anything they'd like to discuss. All right. Mr. Clerk, will you please call, I'm sorry, please read the public statement?
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
All right, at this time, we, the council will allow a five-minute session. If you have comments, please state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Uh, hello, my name is Tony Sherrick. Um, I am the treasurer of the Twin Tierz Disc Golf Club Association, and with me I have Joe Hetton, who is the vice president, as well as Amanda Holbert, who is the youth and director, um, youth and development director, excuse me. Uh, thank you, first of all. I want to thank the city for letting us use the parks for disc golf. It's been absolutely wonderful. We've grown quite a huge community. And today I'm here to ask if the city board would help us get a couple porta potties down at Gargoyle Park. Um, we understand the risk of unlocking and leaving the pavilion is probably not acceptable, even though that's what our players would prefer. But after seeing some of the, um, porta potties and some of the other parks, um, what I've done is I have created a sheet, um, if I may. There's three copies. Excuse me. Um, and I'm hoping that the reason that we don't have porta potties down there is simply because that you guys don't know the numbers. So I just wanted to bring the numbers to you, to also kind of exemplify how awesome our park has, Gargoyle Park and Franchot Park have both been doing. Um, the statistics that I brought here for you is from an app called UDisc, and that is only the players that actually use this app to go and play. In two thousand twenty-three, we had four hundred and twenty-nine individual players, over six thousand hours, um, logged at Gargoyle Park. We had players from twenty-seven states and three countries, including U S, Canada, and Denmark. Uh, so far in the seven months of two thousand twenty-four, we have had twenty-seven hundred rounds, over forty-four hours played. And in the month of June of two thousand twenty-four alone, we have had a hundred and sixty-six individual players, five hundred and sixty-five rounds played. And some of these players came from nineteen different states. So much to where we did so good in June that Sports Illustrated, uh, published an article July twenty-fifth called "The Five Best State Town, State and Town Park Disc Golf Courses in New York State." They mentioned that there's two hundred and twenty-six courses in New York State, and they listed Gargoyle Park as number four. Uh, we only anticipate this to grow. It's an amazing community. And the only complaint that we have from mostly the women and the children are the fact that there's no bathrooms down there. Like I said, we understand that having somebody unlock the pavilion and lock it up two times a day is not feasible. But after seeing that, uh, Franchot Park that has public restrooms during their summer hours, also has a porta potty. So I'm just here today to see, um, if you guys would be willing to work that in. If there's, if there's something that you guys could do, it would be greatly appreciated. And that's it.
I thought a key was provided.
It is pr- provided, um, for course maintenance, um, which Joe is with me. He is the number one guy of, of the maintenance. He does most of the upkeep. Um, but I don't believe that we felt that that gave us the permission to unlock the pavilion to allow, um, and with that being said, it is a, it is a full-time. I mean, we, we host thirty people a week Wednesday nights from May to October, um, and that goes from five o'clock until dark. So, I mean, if we could have that permission, we could have somebody go down in the morning and unlock it, go back in the evening and lock it up under conditions that the city finds appropriate. Um, if porta potties, like I said, the players would absolutely love being able to have a bathroom with running water, but they would also really appreciate even just one, if not two porta potties.
That could be arranged, and, uh, I thought that's what you were doing, uh, opening it when you were there, and then closing it up and you leave.
For our big events, we actually do rent it from the city, the Twin Tierz. Um, we host, uh, in October, we're gonna host a, a regional tournament that is collegiate for college students. We have our annual in September. We also have several other tournaments. And during those tournaments, um, I believe Chris, Chris Hueri, um, we usually rent, actually rent the pavilion and open it. But with that, uh, the keys were basically just to get into the gates and into the maintenance shed. Um, I believe that was what our understanding of was the keys.
Uh, we can actually, without going into debate, so, uh, you, you might, you get off, and I'll wait to arrange.
Excellent. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And just so you, everyone is aware of, this really isn't a cumulative session or anything. Usually there's no back and forth between the mayor's side of the answer.
Understood, sorry.
All right, anyone else? Yeah.
Good evening. Glenn Wall, uh, ninety-three forty-six Sol Mill Run Road, Little Valley, New York. Uh, before your August thirteenth meeting, I had emailed the mayor and Brad Camp to urge them to make sure that the firms responding to the R F P about the sewage system knew that the work needed to be completed quickly, in a matter of months instead of a matter of years. I also suggested more ways to communicate with Ole Anne's residents about the holdoff flushing idea so that if there were to be another discharge, the amount of actual sewage in it would be substantially reduced. At the August thirteenth council meeting here, I reiterated most of those points so that the council could also hear them. It's been over two weeks since that email, and I've received no response from either the mayor or from Mr. Camp. You know, if I knew I might be sued, I would make sure that I didn't give the plaintiff's side more evidence that they could use against me. But with the city, it seems that sometimes you take the opposite tack. Yes, it's good. It's very good that in a few days, there will be some bids open to start the process of segregating sewage from rainwater in Ole Anne homes and businesses. But there is so much more that could and should be done. Honestly, I've kept detailed notes in case of a lawsuit, but I'd be glad to throw them away if I saw better action on the city's part. The city has sat on this problem for over twenty-five years. That's sad, since it could have been solved in at least three different ways in a matter of months, anywhere along that time. By continuing the laxit- laxness, the city is making the risk greater for the river ecosystem and for all the people downstream who rely on the river for water and recreation. Whether your system works properly isn't now in your control. It's at the whim of the weather. And I think I've made that point before. You could still take steps that would make it where you control the toxicity of any discharge that happens while you wait for a fairly quickly accomplished permanent solution. And I hope you will do that. And the forecast for tomorrow includes some heavy thunderstorms. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else? Bert Hall, anyone else? All right, at this time, I'll call policy meeting closed. And again, thank you for that information on, uh, Gargoyle Park. That was, uh, good information. And thank you again for keeping the city fresh on the, uh, water issues that we have. All right, moving forward to financing bills, uh, clerk?
The auditor has processed bills and claims against the city of Ole Anne as per listed to each alderman and recommends payment thereof. Whereas the auditor has presented to the common council bills and claims against the city of Ole, Ole Anne totaling two million, forty thousand, nine hundred, twenty-one dollars and fifty-one cents for the budget and recommended, recommends payment thereof. Now therefore, now therefore be resolved, that the same be and are hereby audited and allowed. And the auditor is hereby authorized and directed to draw warrants for the payment thereof of the amounts set opposite each respective claim.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, any questions or comments? All right, we need sponsors. Uh, sponsor, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Benyon. Always good to see you when you prepare bills. Uh, clerk, would you please follow the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Two seconds says, resolution passes five, zero.
All right, thank you.
Uh, resolution eighty-six dash twenty-four, P L eighty-one dash twenty-four, discussing committee, uh, am I doing your part now?
You want, uh, you read to me, you're getting it late.
Uh, resolution number eighty-six dash twenty-four, P L number eighty-one dash twenty-four, to amend the city of Ole Anne code ordinance to section twenty-four dash one thirty-four to designate no parking on the south side of Euclid Avenue for the entire length of the street.
All right, this is where I talk. Uh, so this was discussed in committee, uh, last time we met. Uh, any questions or comments? All right, we will need sponsors. Sponsored by Benyon, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Panis. Clerk, please follow the roll.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Anastasia Crawford or Abson, resolution passes five A's, no N's. Resolution number eighty-seven dash twenty-four, P L number eighty-two dash twenty-four, to amend the city of Ole Anne code ordinance to section twenty-four dash one thirty-four to designate no stopping, standing, or parking on the north side of East State Street between Rowland Avenue and Orchard Avenue.
All right, again, this was self-explanatory and discussed in committee. Uh, any questions or comments? All right, saying none. Uh, I need sponsors.
Most sponsors.
Sponsored by Panis?
I'll second.
Second by Benyon. Will you please follow the roll?
Second, I have a question.
No.
You did? I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, okay. Please follow the roll.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
And Alderman Anastasia Crawford or Abson, uh, resolution passes five A's, no N's. Resolution number ninety-one dash twenty-four, P L number eighty-six dash twenty-four, out of committee by Alderman Panis, seconded by Alderwoman Forney, to authorize the mayor to execute a grant agreement with the U S Department of Transportation's Federal Aviation Administration for funding associated with the Canorogus County Ole Anne Airport rotating beacon reconstruction design portion.
All right, this one was discussed in committee of the whole. Uh, I guess I missed this part. Did we discuss for how much we are applying for this grant? How much the grant is for?
There was no dollar tolls.
Second?
There was no dollar tolls. I just asked that if it was just for the design portion.
Okay.
That's what Panis said, was the design portion, and it states that right in the deal.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, uh, we already have sponsors, so clerk, will you please follow the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
And Alderman Anastasia Crawford or Abson, resolution passes five A's, no N's. Resolution number ninety-two dash twenty-four, P L number eighty-seven dash twenty-four, out of committee by Alderwoman McCall, seconded by Alderman Benyon, to authorize the mayor to execute a grant agreement with the U S Department of Transportation's Federal Aviation Administration for funding associated with the Canorogus County Ole Anne Airport airfield lighting signage, pathes, and reels, replacement design, and bidding portion.
All right, again, this one was discussed in committee of the whole. Uh, we have our sponsors. Any other questions? Yeah, McCall?
Not a question so much as there was a question about costs. And I, I was reading where it says that, um, ninety percent, that this would cover, make sure they were correct on both of these, ninety percent of the allowable costs incurred. Accurate?
Yes, that's on.
And then we would be responsible for ten percent?
Uh, it's ninety percent, it's five percent state and five percent city.
All right, any other questions?
So, yeah, so the county has no portion of that?
No. We use, uh, the money that the county gives us every year to cover our costs involving these things.
So it's like a drive-in, is that we, we get it to the, uh, the county? Thirty thousand is twice removed. Yeah, right. All right, well, we have our sponsors. Clerk, will you please follow the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
And Anastasia Crawford or Abson, resolution passes five A's, no N's. Resolution number ninety-three dash twenty-four, P L number eighty-eight dash twenty-four, out of committee by Alderman Robinson, and seconded by Alderwoman Forney, to authorize the execution of a payment in lieu of tax agreement between the city of Ole Anne and People Inc. for a portion of the property located at four hundred to four hundred and fifty North Union Street, described as one point seven nine acres.
Thank you very much. Uh, this one, uh, sponsors, uh, came from committee of the whole. Uh, it was previously discussed. Uh, personally, uh, the fact that it's a not-for-profit always leaves me sour, but the fact that they will be paying, uh, taxes and at an increased rate over a four-year period is, uh, good to hear. Uh, any other comments or questions?
Say four or forty?
Forty.
Okay.
Like a D C accent.
Yeah.
Forty, make it. All right, any other question? All right, clerk, please follow the roll.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
And Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia Crawford or Abson, and the resolution passes five A's, no N's. Resolution number ninety-four dash twenty-four, P L number eighty-nine dash twenty-four, out of committee by Alderwoman McCall, and seconded by Alderman Panis, resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from line item eight one two zero dot three oh one and eight one two zero dot four four seven to capital fund number two thirty-two.
All right, again, this one was just, that discussed in committee of the whole. Uh, this is money that was slated for sewer lining project, and it was authorized to use for this particular project. Uh, so are there any other questions or comments in this? All right, saying none. Clerk, will you please follow the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
And Alderman Anastasia Crawford or Abson, resolution passes five A's, no N's. Resolution number ninety-five dash twenty-four, P L number ninety dash twenty-four, out of committee by Alderman Benyon, seconded by Alderwoman McCall, resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from general fund contingency to line item five one one zero dot four one two.
All right, again, this one was discussed in committee of the whole. Uh, any other questions or comments? All right, clerk, will you please follow the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
And Anastasia Crawford or Abson, resolution passes five A's, no N's. Resolution number ninety-six dash twenty-four, P L number ninety-one dash twenty-four, out of committee by Alderwoman McCall, seconded by Alderman Benyon, to authorize the mayor to submit an application to the dormitory authority of the state of New York through the State and Municipal Facilities Capital Program for costs associated with repairs to the Fanny E Bartlett House roof.
All right, again, this one was discussed during committee of the whole. Uh, are there any questions or comments? All right, saying none, please follow the roll.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Anastasia Crawford or Abson, resolution passes five A's, no N's.
All right, any other? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any other questions or comments for regulations? All right, saying none. Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Panis, all in favor?
Aye.
I approve, we adjourn. And, uh, because youth and rec is always last, Forney, you want to get to go up next?
All right, so I'd like to call it order, the Youth and Rec Committee, Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, uh, six fifty P M. Uh, please note that all aldermen are present within the accession.
Uh, please note that all Aldermen are present with the exception, exception of Alderman Anastasia, who's excused. Um, motion to approve the minutes of the previous committee meeting held Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty-four. One second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Panis. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, unfinished business, so where we left off last week, or the last time we met, um. Sent around just getting some thoughts and feedback about the landscaping at Oak Hill Park. So, some of the common things that came back was, as we discussed before, the, the hardscapes of having the rocks. And so, something that's, um, doesn't take a lot to maintain. Um, and has a good, um, eye appeal. Um, some of the other Aldermen suggested, again, connecting with the Bosse's or other co-ops. Um, and then resending out the RFP, um, with very specific, um, requests for landscaping. So, if, you know, we choose to do the rocks, you know, that might be, um, a cost upfront, but in the long run, uh, less maintenance is required. Um, so that was some of the feedback that I got. Um, I don't know if anybody wants to add anything that didn't respond to the emails.
You know, I, I think, you know, I think it makes sense. I, we have, we have beautiful gardens, but they take a lot of work. They take a lot of, um, volunteers. There's a, a large cost, and while this may have a little more cost upfront, that it should be easily maintained. And I think we said, you know, um, looking at that and, you know, because it seemed like the, the tiered project might take, might be beautiful, but would take a lot of work. And it seemed like there was a higher cost. So, I think that when you sent that around, that's what everybody was, was responding to. Um, and that some bushes and stuff. And I think John might have sent around pictures of, uh, some kind of seascapes, I think. Um, I wasn't quite sure. But the, we've seen them that are beautiful. Um, so I, I think it's just about, you know, mere kind of figuring out what's going to work best for us and be cost-effective and low maintenance. Um, because we have wonderful volunteers, but sometimes it's a challenge to, and I know there's stretch, those who are working on gardens, so.
So, I don't know.
I just wanted to add, you know, this particular project, that we spent a lot of money at that park already. And like McCall said, just made it cost-effective. I think that would be the key, uh, hardscaping, uh, as, as it's titled. Um, like I said, I do a lot of it around my property and previous property. Uh, it is very low maintenance. Uh, once the blue moon, you may have to pick one weed out that may have rooted somewhere somehow. Uh, you know, the city is based on volunteers for a lot of our downtown area. And we want to eliminate that, that process when it comes to our parks. I believe we should try to do that. So, with this particular park, I think if we could do it in-house or over a period of time at least, in, in sections, any, any way that will make it cost-effective. To where we can get in, uh, do some type of project where we can get rid of the weeds, get rid of the top layer, and then lay down the landscape. Uh, another idea I thought of had that I did not share was that maybe, you know, you put a big O in there. Do just two different colored rocks. It's Oak Hill, you know, people can always question, is the O for Oak Hill or is it for Ole? So, that's just a thought, you know, just to give the rock just some type of design. You can always do, uh, big pot, pots, big plants, uh, to put up around. Uh, I started doing it around my land. Uh, like, again, a little costly, costly in the beginning, but the, the fact that you can reuse it over and over, you know. You go to these expensive, uh, places around town to, to get your plants, you know, you want a good decent plant where you can go and get your lower-tier plants. But if you want a good plant that's going to, you know, blossom and look nice throughout the summer, you're going to spend some money on it. Well, if you go and get an artificial one, it'll last even longer and it'll cost about the same. So, um, that's just my thought on that.
What, I mean, what are our options? Is, is there, I mean, as far as creating another RFP or anything like that? Being specific, and I don't know what was.
It's entirely up to you. You want us to create the RFP, give us your ideas, and we can do that. Or we can, uh, uh, take your suggestions on a hardscape and, uh, come up with a plan.
Yeah, I mean, you want to try to do it in-house, is that what you're saying?
I mean, that's my thought process. I mean, I don't know the city's schedule, I don't know what they have going on, so I don't know if they have a few bodies to spare. Like I said, if there was something that could go over a period of time, you know, if, if it could be done by the spring of next year, then that would be wonderful, you know. Uh, you have the weather, weather issues that we have here, you know, we have a certain point, which is have to stop anyway, so.
Right.
I, I just believe that, you know, setting out a RFP, I think there's a lot of things that we set out RFPs for that we can really do in-house and save money, but, you know. I guess we could always do a RFP to see what the costs are and then go over there.
Yeah, I mean, I do want to be mindful of all, uh, projects that are already going on too and people's time and stuff too, so. Um, I guess it comes down to whether or not, um, the mayor and Parks and that police and DPW or whoever would do it. Whether or not it is something that could be done in-house with the time and stuff, but that would determine whether it was an RFP or if it was kind of done in-house, I guess. I can put all the comments together and the ideas, and then you can maybe talk about it with your team to see if that's even something that could have been in-house. And if not, then we can move towards our RFP process.
All right, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, as I was sitting here, um, you know, kind of dawn, I mean, the, the, the root cause of this issue, I don't have to make any puns or anything, but. Um, it's likely due to that slope. It's not something parks is maintained, or it could just be grass, right? If it could just be mowed, it could just be grass, and I think everybody would be happier if it was mowed all the time. So, the real problem is the steepness of the slope and what you can do on that slope. So, we need to address that. I mean, it could be some kind of hardscape, it could be some kind of landscape, but it's got to be something that we can keep the garbage and the weeds out of, so it doesn't, you know. It's gotten out of hand because it just couldn't be maintained. So, then you end up with the briars and the bushes that appear unsightly and collect garbage and whatnot. Um, so maybe that even means some kind of equipment, I don't know. You know, could it be grass if we had some kind of equipment for mowing it or something? I, I don't know what that looks like, I don't have the answer, but, um, just wanted to kind of discuss what I feel like the problem is coming.
I will add that to the list of comments. Um, all right, any other comments or feedback on, maybe? All right, on, uh, the cleanup, um, um, Franchot, um, entrance, um, Sonia and I went down there. We were talking with residents, um, but, um, kind of the same feedback is really work with the, the structure, the infrastructure that's already there. Um, and doing, you know, cleaning that up, making it passable, you know, just getting rid of the overgrowth that's coming over, covering the light. Um, growing up the fences and then, um, you know, maybe there's the, the rocks again to eliminate the weeds, but being low-cost and effective, again, something that isn't in excess. That has to be maintained. Um, so, uh, that's kind of where we, um, landed with that. Um, we talked to re- residents, um, with some other, um, ideas that to better utilize, um, the entrance and parts of the park, which we're just, uh, getting that, all that feedback together to, um. Uh, present to, or send to the mayor, so. Um, I don't know if anybody has, I mean, I'm, I'm just updating you on where we kind of stood with that.
So, one of the things when Jen and I went down there and we, we had, had to meet with a couple of residents, and then there was a, a church group that was coming in. And interestingly, unknown, been known to us, they had been kind of doing their own thing, kind of asking people what, um, what they liked about Ole Miss and what they didn't. And they're going to send us that feedback. Um, I think overwhelmingly, and I, I think that Jen and I were, um, looking to see maybe we could set up an appointment, time with you mayor, just to talk about, um, the two entrances. And, you know, kind of, um, what residents kind of have, have identified and some of the people who were there as kind of needs. Um, everybody, I think, agrees that, that Franchot is, I mean, honestly, the waiting pool is just amazing and it's wonderful. Um, it's truly, I think, um, one of, I don't think it's the best secret, but I think that it's just a wonderful asset that we have. And so, we were looking to see how we could capitalize on that. And, um, one of the things, though, that did come up is making sure that we had signage about when the parks are open and closed. Um, so that might be something for us to, to kind of, um, look to, to. Yeah. Um, so that's, I think, kind of a, a small snapshot of what we were looking to do and, and seeing about maybe, um, meeting with you mayor about, um, some ideas that some of the residents had about the park. And, and some of the needs that they saw, and then, um, us looking to put some proposal together. So, if there's a time that, um.
I think you, I think, sorry to interrupt, I think you asked to meet next week.
Yeah, like Thursday or Friday.
Or?
Either or, I think, uh, Thursday or Friday. I didn't, I didn't want to say this, it was too soon, so I'm just saying next week, Thursday or Friday.
Okay, so, is it Thursday or Friday or the fall?
Either or.
I know Friday, I have to go out of town, so next week would work great. Yeah, that would give us time to kind of maybe put, um, the information that we got together, so we can get there too ahead of time.
Yeah, okay, we can work on that.
Um, okay, so the next item also we discussed, I sent out some thoughts and feedback with the security cameras in the park. Um, this was, again, some of the common feedback was, um, a low maintenance. It, um, it should, you know, doesn't need to have like a command center. Um, it doesn't need to be monitored twenty-four hours. Uh, one person kind of stated, you know, Wi-Fi, Axe cameras, you know, they're reasonable, attainable. Um, then someone else had also said, um, not Wi-Fi, uh, maybe like motion detected. So, when there's movement, they kick on record and record over themselves every week, whatever, however you set that. I don't know what the options are, but really, again, the general, uh, theme that came across was the least expensive way, um, for main, and maintain, the least expensive way to maintain them. But also, you know, I'm sure that we have some type of, um, security in the park or perceived security in the park. Uh, so, again, that was a, a common, a thing that, you know, we heard, uh, speaking to residents. Um, and just moving forward, I don't know if anyone wanted to add to that as well.
Well, we talked about what the goal was, and so it's kind of twofold, I think, um, both as a deterrent and then also as, um, if something happened, that then the, the police would have the information and the resource they need to prosecute if need be, make arrests. So, it's kind of a, hopefully a twofold, um, benefit there. So, um, I know that there had been an RFP, and I, I know Carrie had worked on it, and, and I, when she brought it to us, it was much more comprehensive than I think, than we had anticipated. And, and I think we were not necessarily clear as to what we were looking for. So, I think we just need to know what the next steps would be, because we've been talking about this a year plus to see what we would need to do to, to revisit it and kind of move it to the next step.
So, I think, um, like, I guess we did with, um, parking, it's a little different, but creating a type of, you know, task force that really just kind of focuses in on, um, working, um, with the directors or whoever wants to be on it, or whoever you deem should be on it. And, um, kind of creating that plan there to present to the council and, and as far as what makes most sense, um, for the city and the residents and steps forward. So, um, you know, I will, I'm willing to be on that, taking volunteers, if anybody wants to volunteer, um.
Well, you, you asked me to set up, and I've been waiting on the council to do that.
Yeah.
You said you didn't want to do it until, you know, the end of summer, because everybody's busy.
Yeah.
So, we can do that, just let me, let me know who wants to be, who wants to sit on it, and we'll, uh, we'll get it going.
Yeah, I'll definitely sit on it, and so if you have people that are interested in, at least we get things together. Sonia is raising her hand enthusiastically to volunteer as well, so.
Yeah, and definitely IT, because they, they probably have much, a much better idea of, of resources and.
Yeah, definitely. Um, okay, so mayor's going to, so put us two on there, um, Sonia and Jennifer, and then, and then go from there.
I heard that John wanted to be on it, perhaps? Just don't, not show up.
That's right. Um, uh, so, um, any more comments on that? All right, so new referrals for consideration. Um, I know Jason had brought up the, um, water station in Fornice. Um, and then Brad had also sent out an email before the meeting, kind of highlighting, um, a list of fountains that work and don't work. And, um, the models and brands that are actually seem to be the most reliable, um, but you can kind of bring politely.
Yeah, so I've been, I was approached by, uh, by someone who was involved with the, uh, the youth football and some sports activities in Fornice Park. Um, and their concern was that, uh, that they don't have a hydration place down at the, uh, field one area where, I think that's where the practice football field, and they use the, uh, I'm not sure if they still use the fields of softball and baseball down there in the summer. Yes, they do. Um, but just knowing there were some facilities down there, so I figured it may not be too big an issue to place. Uh, maybe there's already water service in something down there, and something could be installed on the side of a building, maybe. Um, it's not like a good idea to me, I'm, I'm looking to the city to tell me whether that's feasible or not.
Well, I mean, if you want to talk, I can read your email, but you can, if you want to add to it, I can.
Um, Brad, to answer for us, Jason, there's no water in that shed that he has about. So, as far as a hydration station at Fornice, that we have two of them there. One is in the bathroom, like, um, structured there where the men's and women's bathroom is. There is a fort in the fountain right there. Now, we have a fountain that's, um, down at the other pavilion next to the pond that doesn't work. Um, so as far as, you know, football players and other athletic events that are going on in that field one, field two area, they can, they can fill their bottles and stuff over at the, at the fountain by the bathroom. That was the place last year.
Yeah, I think what the request was to try and get something closer to the field down there. Uh, so there's no water service down in that area of the park, if any kind, no.
This is, it's in the middle, right? So, it's kind of like where it kind of branches off to go this way and then branches off to go that way where the concept, like across.
Where the football field is?
No, the, the water station.
When you pull it out rolling, it's in that bathroom building right there. As I, you come in and go to the right, the way right, there's a little football equipment shed and football practices on the outfield of fields one and two.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, but there's no, there's no yard height or anything over that.
Yeah, and I think that one that works is centrally located, I mean, but.
Now, with, um, we've talked about doing some upgrades or some new ones around the parks. Um, is there any, is there any need to, to up, like, to do something new at Fornice there, or are those fountains, they're, they're, are, are they an issue with service or maintenance or anything? Or would it make sense to upgrade them or not?
It would make sense to replace one that doesn't work, yeah. It's by the playground, by the pavilion.
Now, if we do that, we, we've talked about some kind of hydration station where you can fill bottles, is that something we would do there?
You could, sure, that's an option.
Okay, 'cause my thought is if we do do that. Okay. Because my thought is if we do do that there, to upgrade the one that's working to that same type of station.
The one that's working is a wall-mounted one. We might be able to replace that with one that has a bottle filling station. I don't know what that looks like. I'm not familiar with the wall-mounted ones that are available for outside use. But as far as the freestanding ones, that's an option, you know. Those hydrants, they cost, are those fountains, they cost three to five thousand apiece. So you're looking at about five thousand for one with a bottle filler plus, you know, I know we've talked about, we wanted to have like a pack, you know, a dog station at each one of them. So there's, there's plenty of options available and we can do that. But it does make sense to replace at least one that doesn't work with one that does work in a bottle filling station, something appropriate.
Yeah, I think in Brad's email, like looking at the ones that don't work and going with a consistent brand, and he sent an email, the most dependable, the most dependable fountain brand. So those ones seem to be the best. And again, I just think it's important, like the one that doesn't work at Fornice and the other parks that have non-functioning fountains, I think those should be priorities first. So there is some type of water, and it doesn't have to be, you know, the gold standard of fountains, but some type of water in each park so people have access to that. So, yeah, he put a picture in the email too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I haven't took that up.
Yeah, so Brad, with replacing them, I know you've had a lot of requests lately, and then you got the, you sent out for a quote, right?
Yeah, yeah, the ones that I've seen online are three to five thousand. They've always been coming in there, but I asked for all for seven of them, to replace all the ones that aren't, the ones that we want standardized with.
Okay.
So you might get a small discount if you buy more of them.
Okay. So you'll just follow up with us when that comes in?
Yeah, as soon as I can.
Okay.
Quick question, will they be installed in us? Okay, and then next, with, with all of our parks, a lot of them are old, outdated, and we're constantly trying to upgrade them and bring them up to, I don't know, to be a little more ergonomic. So would it be best, maybe at the beginning of each budget, we look at those smaller things, you know? We pay so much attention to, you know, the water line and trying to do lights and all of these other things, but maybe those small things we all, you know, seem to ignore, overlook, fill in the blank. But something like that, you know, water, something as basic as that, maybe we should look at, you know, maybe not all the parks, but that park in particular, maybe getting water closer to the fields, you know what I mean? Where these people are, you know, Marcus Park, we don't need it, you know, at Warbets, you know, we don't need, you're walking distance to wherever you need. But this particular area, because the fields are so spaced out and we have water in just two designated areas, by the time you walk that distance and walk back, you're probably out of water. So then you walk it back to get it again. So something like that, that basically, I think, you know, just place in one strategically, somebody feet, I don't, you know, I think it would be simple to, you know, put the water line in the ground, you know, somebody feet down, you know, for the freeze level, and getting that water to those areas. I think that'll be a nice addition anyway to the park.
Right, yeah. So I think a lot of it, the location of the hydrant will probably hinge on the location of the mains, unless we're willing to invest more money to extend the main to put a hydrant.
I mean, you don't need much pressure, so, I mean, just to.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think that'd be a good addition to that part anyway, you know? Just a thought, you know, something that, you know, if we say, hey, we'll invest two thousand or five thousand to water fountains this year, and then we can just piggyback each year and say, okay, until it's done, you know, and that way we're not just digging up the whole entire park and make it unusable for a half a season or so. Just a thought.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, so committee reports, none. Losh and Tojer?
Same.
Okay, hi, Alderman Robinson, all in favor?
Right.
Hi. All right, Yarner?
Okay, I'll call the order of the finance committee meeting for Tuesday, August twenty-seventh. So all members are here with the exception of President Crawford and Alderman Anastasia. Approval of the minutes from previous committee meeting, which was Tuesday, August thirteenth. I'll make a motion. Do we have a second? Okay. Is it, Jer, was that you? Ben? Okay, Alderman Benyon, all in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Okay. Unfinished business, we actually discussed this at the last meeting, and so we, Brad had sent out some information for us. So thank you for clarifying for me on reservoir cleaning and inspection. So we'll start there and go to the well.
Yes, well, the reservoir cleaning inspection, like we talked about before, there's kind of two methods. One is sending essentially a robot in to clean it and inspect it, and video camera, who would have that record for us. The other option is to send in a diver, same deal, clean, inspect, video. The prices were fairly similar. If you're looking for a recommendation from me, I feel a lot more comfortable sending a robot in than a human. I think that makes life a little bit easier and a lot safer, and I would be much more comfortable with that. So, yeah, as far as funding, the cleaning and the inspection of the reservoir, I believe I forwarded an email from Lens. Lens said we had seventy-five thousand in contingency, so contingency currently is untouched. We could fund that project that I would expect to come in twenty-five to thirty thousand and get that done with those funds. Obviously, there's a little bit of uncertainty with not knowing how much sediment might be in these, having never been cleaned before, the condition of something that might need to be, you know, repaired or something like that. I know we talked about the addition of mixers into these. So, but I think, you know, for now, cleaning with the rover unit and inspecting and getting that footage is really important.
So Brad, in what you sent us was the robot, the first attachment there in terms of, it was a multi-page one, the attachments I sent?
I can't remember the order of the attachments that I had put in there.
Okay. Because I know one of them didn't open up, but one of them it did, was much, it was much more comprehensive in the information it provided, it seemed.
Yeah, so that was the one for the rover unit.
Okay. That one was very comprehensive and clearly we can follow in.
Yeah, yes.
This one, that's the.
Yes.
Okay. And it did seem that, yeah, the price was very comparable, maybe even less with this after, after we looked. And the only question would be how much sediment, right?
Right, right. So I think the full cover is two inches of sediment, and obviously we have no idea. I don't expect there to be a lot, and I'd expect it to be uneven. You know, it might be five inches here and one inch here, like, so I don't know how they quite calculate that.
Inches? You think they're eight inches? I hope it's over there. Yeah, I would expect inches, yeah.
But just to add my input on this, I, you know, I'm, I'm for going with a rover. And again, we mentioned putting in the mixers. I say while we're in there, go ahead and get that part done as well, and get the inspection done. And yes, take it safe, but I hope for the best from there.
Yeah. So the mixers, to quote for the mixers we got from the company with the diver. So I'll kind of have to merge two of those, see, see what that total package is going to look like with doing the rover unit and then having another company come in with the mixers, installing the mixers. I think the mixers are a drop-in unit, so we don't need to enter the unit, that structure. But I'll have to see what that, that whole project looks like and get a total cost for that.
Do we know the height of this tank? How, the depth of how?
Thirty-three feet?
Thirty-three feet? And is there a special permitting involved with this, considering this is a complete confined space and?
Not with the road yet.
No? Well, yeah, not with the road, but, you know, if we're gonna, you said combined install, so that means someone's gonna have to go in and install.
No, I think the install for a mixer is no entry.
Okay, so you can just put it together, drop in, guide it down somehow.
Somehow, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So I'll, like I said, I'll have to see what that whole thing looks like, you know, getting the mixer from another company, having your rover unit come with a different company. Or maybe this other company with a rover unit can do a mixer, you know, add a mixer into there. Well, I can certainly contact them tomorrow, see if we, tell them, hey, this is what we're looking for. Is this something you can do for us? If it is, add it to the bulk and then reissue the bulk.
Yeah, that would seem like, I guess if the one company was doing it, it might seem like it might be a lesser cost for us if one company does it versus two.
Right, this other company may, they may be able, you know, to provide it, I don't know.
Okay. And then you'll get that to us, and then we should put this back on our next, the third? Does that give you enough time?
It's next Tuesday.
I think it's next Tuesday. Do you want to?
I should be able to, hopefully, if I can get it.
Okay. We'll put it on, and if not, you can just get, send us an update and we'll move it forward.
I would have to have it by Friday.
Oh, so should we move it a couple weeks then?
Probably.
Okay. So will you put it on then for, what would that be, then, the seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Okay, is that too far out, Brad?
That's fine.
Okay. Yeah.
But particularly, Brad, that's nothing to do with valve replacement that we talked about with the capital project, isn't it?
Correct.
Now, to do the valve replacement, you would have to empty one side of the tank, you said, correct? If you drain that tank down?
No, the valve replacement is at one of the well sites, at well thirty-eight, thirty-seven, at Alpham, East River Road.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's completely separate.
Okay, I was thinking there was something else up on that.
There are four valves up there that need to be replaced, rehabbed, exhaled somehow.
So to do them, you'd have to drain the tank to do?
Not necessarily.
So is there a way that all of these things could be just lumped into one project?
The reservoir valves and cleaning and putting a mixer in there, that could be on one. That's, I mean, that's substantially more expensive.
Substantially more expensive than just doing one piece of it, but in the long run, by piecing out in three pieces, do those three pieces add up a lot more than what it would be to do it as one project?
We may save with overhead, kind of manage all the different individual little projects. We can look at it.
You were saying on that, like mobilization, like just some stuff, correct?
Again, in common scales, the project gets bigger.
Is it a big problem to look at that?
Yeah, I'll talk to Brad.
Yeah, we can look at it. I think, I don't think there's a lot of savings because the company that's going to do the cleaning and inspection and putting the mixer in is not the company that's going to do anything with the valves. So it's, you're gonna have two or three different companies in there because one, cleaning inspection and putting the mixer in is one.
I got you, I just didn't know if there was a way that one person, you know, one, how many ways to be some savings?
There probably is, but not a lot.
Okay.
Just because of how many entities are involved in.
Okay, so we'll put the reservoir cleaning and inspection back on for September seventeenth. And then we jumped ahead a little bit to the well thirty-seven, thirty-eight pump motor and piping.
Yeah, so in my email that I had sent out, I kind of gave you an idea of what it's, what's gonna cost to replace the motor, the pump, and the two valves. So you have a check valve, the isolation valve, and we will be replacing some piping as well because we want to go from twelve-inch valving down to eight-inch valving, which is more appropriate for the pumps, actually. I don't know why they, why we have twelve-inch in there to begin with. The check valves are original equipment, they were installed in nineteen eighty-eight. The station runs twenty-four seven. The water that we produce there is water that we make the most money on. Obviously, the well sites produce water that is, doesn't cost us nearly what the water we produce from the filtration net costs. So I'm just, like I, like I explained before, we have three pumps there, but we only run one at a time most generally, unless there's a serious demand, then we can run two. But these check valves have scaling on them built up. We tried to rehab one a couple years ago in house. That didn't go as well as I had hoped. They don't make parts with these check valves anymore, so we're looking to replace them. They leak past, so when one pump is running, the other two are off. And it should provide pressure against these check valves, but they're scaling on it and they're leaking past the check valve and then through the pump backwards and then into the well, and into the clear well that we're pumping out of into the distribution system. So it's creating, it's creating an inefficiency for the pump that's running, and it's also creating more scaling on the equipment that isn't running because it's pushing back through those.
So Brad, that was, you sent us actually two different.
Yeah, so the first one, I made an error on with some of the calculations with, you know, the pump and the check valves and stuff. So I reissued that and kind of cleaned it out a little bit, gave you an idea of what it is for, you know, one, two, and three pumps, you know, depending on how they want to do that.
So it looks like on the average somewhere between a hundred and twenty-nine thousand to a hundred and forty-six thousand, kind of the range I saw in the one and the other.
That was, that's where he has his broken down side, that it's, for a new pump motor and one valve was eighty to ninety-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For one new pump and motor and three valves replaced was the one twenty-nine to one forty-six that you mentioned.
Right.
And then for three, you everything was two eighty-three to three hundred thousand, correct?
Yeah, that's not right.
And you said the middle one, the one new pump and motor and three valves would be the most beneficial to the water reentry.
Right, so you do one, one motor, one pump, and then the three valves. That way, you got a new pump, motor, and all, everything is isolated. You don't have to worry about the water coming back into the good room.
It was just up there, they, and I understand there's only one motor that works.
Right, right now.
Two bars that are down out of the three.
Correct, yeah. Scaling is an issue at that station. So we've been handling it, you know, having these pumps redone about every five years. With that, we could, we could obviously get a longer duration between rehabs if the check valve is isolated properly.
So are we going to do on two pumps or one pump?
That's what he had in his email. There was one new pump and motor and then three valves, is what he was saying there. So it's for everything.
So we have one pump and motor that's functioning now. I would do one of them that doesn't, that isn't functioning properly, and the three checks. So then, once you did that, all the valves isolate fine, two, two motor pumps are able Once you did that, all the valves isolate fine, two, two motor pumps are able to function properly, one of them being brand new, then I would do the, the other motor and pump, say, in a year. And then the year after that, do the motor and pump that's running right now, the only one that we have running right now.
Jared, what was the one pump, one motor and three valve?
One pump, one motor, three valves with installation was one twenty-nine and change to one forty-six and change. That's thousands of dollars given.
But I think on- once we determine kind of what road we wanna go down, I wanna ask him for another firm quote on exactly what we're asking them to do.
And I know you mentioned kind of the lead time was ten to twelve weeks, so we need to get out in RFP, because I'm guessing weather is part of the issue, right, in terms of getting this done if we're looking to.
Yeah, I mean, there's a substantial lead time, you know, on- on all water infrastructure parts, it's, it's really hard to come by right now.
That, in fact, we're only using one pump right now.
We're using one? Right, which is, that's how we normally operate there, is one pump. Um, one pump is down, one pump is also not functioning.
Okay, but you- you typically use one pump, but if something happened with that pump, you have another pump that could be used.
Right now, we don't.
No, I'm saying typically, that's the way, correct, Jared, right now, if that pump fails.
Right, so how it's kind of designed is, we could have a demand for two pumps running now, and then we have a redundant one if one of them fail. So right now, we have one pump that runs and two that don't. So if one pump that runs broke down, obviously we have to shut that station down, we'll have to produce more water from the filtration plant, which is more possible, because into our.
You have any?
Project.
I was asking for more upfront information, but I'm curious what it, you know, it's in the long run, do we save money to replace all these pumps as opposed to treating more water to plant?
I'm sorry?
You, if you're, you're treating more water to plant because you can't pump as much water out of the station?
Not currently.
Right, but if you only replace one pump, are you gonna start running two?
Well, it's all based on demand. So we have scale controlling things, you know, infrastructure, or our, our distribution system, um, pressures. So we set it to- to send out so much water to give us a certain pressure.
Okay, so you don't, so the stick of this station would go to running on two pumps, do you think?
Very rarely does it run on two.
Okay. I think at a minimum, we've gotta do a pump, motor, and three, three valves, right? At minimum, and then, can hold Brad to do another pump next year. I think, um, my thought, it's not my committee, but my thought is, uh, we bring this back at the next committee meeting, hopefully, all members are here. We discuss the facts again, let it be known that we only have one operating pump right now. If that pump was the goal, we have absolutely no replacement that's working currently. Uh, I think while looking at doing just one pump, one motor, and the three valves, uh, we're gonna spend a substantial amount. Um, I'm in favor of doing all. Uh, yes, it's more, but again, this is infrastructure, this is something that we can't live without, without it, that we're in a major issue in that particular area of the city. Um, I think, uh, if possible, if the city, I don't know if the city has looked at, uh, possible ways of paying, maybe, uh, anything, any way of, uh, any transfer of funds or anything out there. Uh, I'm not the money guy, I'm not the finance guy, um, you know, Crawford's normally, uh, more in tune with- with those things, but if- if there's a way that we can, uh, optimize an opportunity of moving money from something that we know, uh, just like we did with the capital outlay money that we just transferred, uh, tonight. Uh, if we have something available, we can obtain some money to lessen the burden, and then we can go ahead and try to find ways of getting the balance to be able to do all of them. I think it would be a lot more beneficial than rolling the dice and going down the road. Um, and I'm just thinking about the North Olian thing, we sat there and rented for all of those months, and then turn around and now we're coming, hell, it's even fixed yet, we put the money aside, so. I mean, to avoid all of the extra money that we're gonna put into doing something like that, let's go ahead and focus on this, get this taken care of, hopefully nothing else comes up to where we have to say, oh crap, now we need to find money for this, and- and get this infrastructure updated. That's just my thought.
Alderman Benyon?
Yeah, Vernon, I agree there, but Brad, if you did, you replace one down pump, could the other down pump be refurbished, did you say?
If we replace, if we got a brand-new pump and motor to replace one of them that's down, could we refurb the one?
The other one?
The other one. Um, I- I think we could, I would probably wanna consult with the- the company that we have refurb these pumps for us, because I don't know how many times we can refurb them.
I just was asking, 'cause along with saying, it's a little bit of a savings if you have one that's working, put in one new one of the one down one, refurb the other one. Buys you a larger window, but it all still gives you three pumps that could operate and have fail safes. I know that only one definitely operates, and there's a bit of a savings there that we can use a little bit. And to your point, Vernon, like, I don't really think, I think that the five of us, it gives some direction to just to kind of go out to an RFP. I mean, the likelihood of, it seems like having seven people at a meeting, just come to that next meeting, three weeks down the road, maybe three more weeks down the road, and now all of a sudden, two people are missing, so we're gonna kick that can down, so now it's five weeks down the road, it's got a ten, twelve week. I think you just give the suggestion with the five that are here, and we're more than able to.
If we had an RFP, and in the RFP, had alternates, we could have, once it comes back, yeah.
So I guess the suggestion, kind of thing, we just, I just suggested this, and then the alternate is just replace, and.
Yeah, we could have, you know, the base bit be one pump, three valves, alternate one, two, you know, and then additional pump. And all of them you can choose.
Like we can, Ben.
We could have multiple alternates, doesn't just have to be one alternate, you could have.
Yes, you go the one that you said is the most beneficial, the one that you said in the middle, that one twenty-nine to one forty-nine is the base bit, like Ben's saying, and then second alternate would be refurbishing the third pump, and then the final alternate would be just replacing everything.
I agree with that. Yeah, we can do that.
So can we then, that would go on our meeting for the seventeenth also then, correct?
Hmm, no.
We can tell you, with the north leading project, he's gonna be in the field. You can authorize him tonight to do an RFP.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Let's see if we can go, let's see if there's something that you got as fast, and if you go, and I expect a meeting.
So all you need from us is the go-ahead, and it sounds like we are in consensus with putting out an RFP with the kind of different tiers that you will.
The base bit, your little option, and the two alternates as discussed, Brad?
Okay, yeah. Yeah, like Ben said, you know, with the project in North Olian, kicking off on Tuesday, um, it's kind of like a D B I S, so you know kind of what to expect. Probably spending quite a bit of time there, I'm also trying to get RFP out of Paul Street, um, that station, and then I'll be going with that as well.
And sleep at some point.
So do we need a commotion to, okay?
Just the go-ahead. Okay.
Right.
Yeah, next week is committee, so we, we're just gonna bounce it to the bottom, the seventeenth, right?
Well, if we give the head, go ahead for the RFP, then he can go ahead and put it out, we don't need to do anything proper. And, right, and then when he gets that back, then he'll let us know where we're at.
I'm in third gear, I'm working on it before.
Okay, that's all good?
I'm just ready to talk.
Any other conversation?
Yes.
That, I mean, that is so much we can talk about, but finance and the RFP will have to come back.
All good?
Yeah, we're just talking about the financing, once we get the line, or once we get the numbers from the RFP, we'll come back and say, here's the numbers, we're gonna connect.
Perfect.
On the call, we have, uh, phobia, jerk, completely, we have an executive session.
Okay. Okay, so new referrals for consideration, none, committee report, none, and I'll make a motion to enter executive session.